Okay, looks like we're on. Evening Nottingham, welcome to Board of Selectmen meeting. I'd like to start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize the support staff here, those who work for the admin office and Lorraine here who takes minutes. They take some time out of their busy day to keep everything going functionally well in this town, so hats off to them, and I just want to thank them for their efforts. That being said, has everybody had an opportunity to look at the manifest? No issues, comments, questions?
I had none.
Alright, somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of 8/9/2021 and the payroll manifest of 8/10/2021.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Minutes, looks like from 7/26. I'll abstain from this because I was not here at that time.
I make a motion to shut the minutes as written, 7/26/21.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second? All in favor? Four, one abstention. Budget, have they met yet? No. No, planning board?
Wednesday.
CIP? Not yet.
Not yet.
300th.
300th, nothing from me. I don't know if Steve's got anything. Pancake breakfast?
We have the table at the Constitution, and we come up with a new ornament for Christmas tree martini or a medallion for this year.
Oh, that's nice.
Nice.
Great.
And then I'm just going to send this around. This is the letter that's going out to all the businesses, and we've got them all to the big corporates, like taking a while to get back, but now all the local businesses, we started flooding them last week, so.
Okay.
So with regards to the 300th, so we had them here two meetings ago, I think, right? Like, I don't recall what the next steps were with them.
We're going to get them in again. I just wasn't, I thought I didn't know if it was this week, or...
Okay.
And then it worked out it wasn't tonight because Steve had something to do.
Okay.
But he said that either the 23rd, or whatever date was after that.
I'm just thinking, like, at this point, maybe we need to have them come in on a regular basis, like, maybe every third meeting or something like that, just so that we can kind of touch base with them, see how things are going, see, you know, how the plans are evolving.
Yeah, okay. Not opposed to that.
Yeah.
Okay. You want them to the next meeting?
I mean, any, any...
I just tell them besides showing up, there's only, there's probably Steve and Rhoda. And Steve?
You do have to be aware, it's just five months away now.
Yeah, so I just think we should be in sync, you know, in terms of where the plans are, what the needs are, that kind of stuff.
So why don't we plan?
You have, we identified a bunch of questions last time. You want to give them something specific to come back to you with, or I just, you run the risk of...
Yeah.
Sure, no, I know, I mean...
Talking about the dream over and over again.
Well, that's my, that's what, I mean, because we had some fairly good estimated prices, but I think there were still questions about, you know, what the exact prices were going to be for some of the things, and then I think there were maybe some questions about the logistics of, like, the fireworks and that kind of stuff. So I think, you know, to me, those are the things that I think we need to make sure that we've got the firm set of what's going to happen, what the cost is, and what the logistical precautions are.
If I recall, it was like 10, they estimated 10,000 for fireworks?
Yeah, but it's not just the cost, it's like, where are they?
Right, right. Just wondering what kind of show it would be at 10,000, because usually communities spend a lot more on fireworks to have a big show, if you will.
Yeah. Yeah, and again, I'm not trying to challenge anything or be a jerk, I just, I think we should be in sync and understand what's going on.
Understood. So if we can put them on the...
Your 23rd meeting's getting full. The one after that would be Labor Day, so we, I think we're going to be talking about extra Mondays here pretty soon.
Okay.
Number of things that you're juggling and things that we're going to want to touch on before we get into budget season, so.
Yeah.
If I can maybe work on that before we commit to the 23rd for 300th, knowing that you want them in soon?
Yep, fair enough.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, even the one after the 6th is fine in my mind, you know?
Yeah, just the things that we have, you've got stuff on your action items list that aren't even really slotted in the agenda yet, and then we have, we have a visit from the library coming, we've got an appointment next meeting about noise, you're probably going to hear about some Watercross event licensing that's working its way toward you.
Okay.
And that's everything I see so far, but that's all just on top of regular business, so you're starting to fill up, and we'll get it all in there.
Anything else on the 300th? No? Marsden?
Uh, yeah, we're, they're in the process of looking into and trying to get the shed over the well done. Honestly, I'm not exactly sure where that process is, I haven't had a chance to talk to Matt this week. We've got our fundraising committee meeting again tomorrow night, and I was talking to Courtney today, and Courtney is looking to do flag football out there, September, October timeframe, so it'll be the first fun activity that we'll start to see out there.
Finally getting some use.
Yep, exactly.
Good. Anything else on Marsden?
Nope.
No? Is there another planned cleanup day, or pretty much everything?
I haven't heard anything from Courtney, I think for now, we're good, yeah.
Yeah, they're talking about marking trails.
Yeah, they're talking about marking the trails and also about naming some of the trails.
Nice.
And so I had a brief conversation with her about that, and I was like, well, you got summer camp going, why don't you get the kids involved in helping you come up with names for the trails?
That'd be neat, yeah. Okay. Town administration report?
The annual overlay paving schedule keeps getting bounced around, the weather's been really tough on us, but it's, the new plan is next week for Mill Pond and McCross, about three miles of overlay work. Road will be down at one lane with flaggers for good chunks of the day, but always passable, never any closures necessary. We're not going to put the full court notification out until we have more confidence that it's actually going to happen, but that's, it's the, it's planned for next week, and we'll be there this week doing prep work on the shoulders and stuff like that, so there's going to be a lot of activity on that core over the next couple of weeks. The asset management plan, the survey of culverts and all those things that we got the grant for, that work is underway slowly. The surveying, the field surveying, the walking around, measuring and taking photos of things is underway. You'll see some more paperwork and approvals around the contract, but now that we are at this point in the process, we can actually do work and get paid for it, so that is going to be slow, but chipping away at it. We have a RFQ, a request for qualifications out for the mezzanine project at the fire station. That's due pretty soon. Information's on the town website, but that's from a warrant article to put the two bunk rooms in. And once that is in the door, we will start on RFQ for the kitchen in this building, similar approach. We're going to say, this is our, these are our priorities, this is our budget, what can you do for us, is the gist of what we're asking respondents to answer. We're not, so it's more of a design-build kind of approach than a, these are the hard specs, go build it for us, because we just don't have the technical ability to do that, and we can better kind of fit the budget this way if we start with, this is the budget, just like the fire station.
Yep.
And last, on my list, I've been emailing you about a potential joint workshop, non-meeting with your attorney and the planning board. That came up in the last planning board meeting somehow, right? I heard from the, I heard from the chair and the vice chair about it, so I don't know how far the discussion got there, but...
It did get very far.
Okay.
Everything came back to, I don't know.
Okay. So in an effort to try and put an end to the "I don't know," I was trying to make that happen, the leading date at this point is Wednesday, September 1st, it's not locked in yet, but it's starting to, starting to work with the, most of the players, so pencil that in, it'll be an early evening affair, a non-meeting, so no public, no, when you meet with your attorney, you can do that. And when we pin that date down, I'll let you know, assuming you want to participate in that. It's going to happen with the planning board. You haven't talked about it, so I assumed before you that you would want the option to participate, but you certainly don't have to. And that's it, that I have.
Okay. Action items from last meeting, we touched base on the 300th, road standard policy and road guidance. I understand, we're not going to talk about the road standard tonight for the purpose of, I would really like to talk to the town attorney, and I have lots of questions for him, and I invite other board members to come if they'd like, but it sounds like you folks have pretty much made up your mind in regards to the road standard policy and so on, so I would just like a little more in-depth conversation with the attorney. Hopefully by the next meeting, we can...
If there's a conversation with the attorney, I'd like to be a part of it.
Absolutely. I welcome everybody to come along, so. That being said, hopefully by next meeting, we can discuss this and finalize the...
People want an open forum on that, too, for discussion that night.
Okay. All right. And road maintenance guidance, Sean?
That's a, yeah, I mean, you probably want to get past that first step, but we do need to, we do need to have that conversation, that's on the radar, too. That may be a, maybe that's a candidate for a breakout, different kind of, different scheduled meeting, but I think we probably ought to figure out what you're going to do with the policy first and then...
Correct, yeah, okay.
So a working session with Sean on the...
Maybe, I don't know, I'm just spitballing.
Yeah. I think it would be good to have a conversation with him.
Yeah, I think you need to have a more free-flowing, you know, what's the reality kind of stuff that they're dealing with.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Assessing, we have a few down here. Have everybody had an opportunity to look them over?
Yeah, so this first one, map 19, 6-1, the recommendation was that we get in touch with the landowner for more detail.
There is a letter attached here.
There was, yeah.
If you had, everybody had a...
I haven't read it through yet, but...
The handwritten letter from him?
Yeah.
Yeah, he wrote it.
Tyler?
Yeah, I mean, basically what, it's a, it's not an Avatar thing, it's more of a hardship.
What is everybody's thought on this?
I'll, I'll be right up front with it. I don't feel it's the town's burden. We're not going to take the person's house, no matter what, if it's their only place of living, we've never done that. I don't see this board or any board to remove somebody from their house. It just becomes a tax lien against the town. Have town on there, and town gets their money down the road. It's harsh to say, but we're just giving somebody a free handout. I know the situation's terrible, but again, it's...
It is unfortunate, however, I do recall that we denied a previous person that submitted one not long ago, and that person is in the midst of possibly losing their home, and...
Not by our course.
Well, we denied it, so chances are that within the next year or so, they will end up losing their home, but...
I'm not sure that I...
Is that because of the bank mortgage they can't pay?
Uh, well, if you recall, I don't want to say the address or anything, but the husband had passed away, they had an abatement in place, he's passed on. This individual has a limited income, fixed income, and we denied the request, and like I said, within the next year or so, she may end up losing her home. I don't want to see that happen to another resident.
I mean, I don't want to sound cold, but I don't see it as a direct line between our decision and the individual losing their house. I think there's, in those kinds of situations, there's lots of different factors.
I think more than we, because the big part of what we're talking about, I mean, this could be more underlying situations, the money if we, if we, that individual, if we saved them the $1,000 a year, I don't think that in the long run is going to be enough money, if you were in the process of losing your home, to help you. And again, I'm not trying to be cold about this, but it's, it's not, I mean, we're not going to take their house, but if they lose it for some other reason, it's not the town's fault.
Have we taken any properties that are occupied for tax?
Not in my time.
Not in your time?
And I, I don't think we took any before, for several years before I got here, so, period, so. You've got a, you've got a, you've got a written policy that says, you know, that's your absolute last resort, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to take vacant land, or, you know, seasonal properties, rental properties, perhaps, but no, your policy is quite biased against taking a primary residence as well.
I think we also have to be consistent in our decisions and how we handle these situations.
I mean, I look at it, I mean, it's terrible, but since this pandemic's happened, nobody's lost money. Well, matter of fact, some people have made money, you know, so I mean, again, as much as I feel bad about it, people have had some source of income coming in from these stimulus checks, I think they're still coming out, I mean, left and right, so. Again, I don't, I don't like the fact that it is what it is, and we've already set precedent before.
I mean, Chris, I don't know if you guys looked into it, but their statement here was, several years ago, I applied for an exception and was approved the maximum amount, and I didn't have to pay any property taxes?
I don't, I haven't looked at this particular case, but what, the reason that you're starting to see all these, because you've never had to deal with these difficult questions, is because of the revale in 2020.
Yeah.
The elderly and disabled exemption amount didn't move up, but the property values all moved up. I don't know if that applies in this case, but there's a whole lot of people that used to have very small or no tax bill as a result of that exemption, and the exemption doesn't automatically keep pace with the value, so that's why you've seen an onslaught of these in '21.
Yep.
It's the new tax bills that are, it's, it's very real for a very small number of homeowners, it's a big change, and this, that may be the case in this one. And there's, there's been also cases where people haven't, you know, they're just no longer eligible for some of the discount opportunities that we have, or they don't finish the paperwork that's required, and they miss out on an opportunity. Those are the, those are the typical cases that we're seeing, and they're, some of them are legitimate hardships, probably like this one, but the change in evaluations is oftentimes what's flushing these problems out for you.
So I'm sensing that the board is leaning towards denying. Is that accurate?
Told you where I stand, so.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, certainly not a comfortable decision, but I think in fairness to being consistent in the way that we treat these things, that I think we need to deny it as well.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion? Or do you want to talk, discuss the others first?
No, I think we should treat this one individually.
Okay.
Sorry, just going to pull it up if I want to make the motion, so I can read it right. Why does that read the same year?
I make a motion that we deny the application of map 19, lot 6-1, 6-1 for the abatement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Four, one no. Okay.
One on the other side of the page, map 24, lot 31, the recommendation was to deny that simply for not providing the required information to process the abatement. And since that's a requirement to get the abatement, I would say that we deny that one as well.
That one's pretty straightforward. Motion?
Make a motion to the select board, deny the abatement application for map 24, lot 31, as per Avatar recommendations.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
And the remaining two, that's map 24, lot 141, and map 76, lot 2. If you look those over, those are basically error corrections.
Yep.
Okay. So given that, yeah, these are cleaning up errors in the paperwork, or errors in the assessments, yeah, the recommendation is to approve them.
Want to make a motion?
Make a motion, the select board approve the abatement applications for map 24, lot 141, and map 76, lot 2, as per Avatar recommendations.
A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous? General business, impact fees.
You looked at this in June, you had questions for council that you wanted answered. Do you now have that answer? And the question before you remains the same, whether you want to use fire impact fee funds for retiring debt on the bond for the fire station. In very brief terms, council agrees with what we've been doing, says it's, says it's valid.
Okay.
And unlikely to be challenged successfully.
Need a motion for that?
Yes, you need to, you need to tell us to release those funds by way of a vote.
Any more discussion on that?
Nope.
No? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion that the select board approve the expenditure of $32,199 in fire department impact fees for a principal payment on the fire station bond.
Second that.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay, we're a little ahead of schedule. Is everybody here from the conservation? No?
We're waiting for one more, and she has documents on conservation.
Okay.
Okay.
I have, did you guys approve the land use change?
We're going to change it?
Yeah, oh, did you have some kind of correction or something on a land use change act?
That was the, that was the 24, 141, I believe.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, while we're waiting for the other board member for the conservation committee, can you give us an update on the roof floor property?
Yes, I traded notes with the buyer last week, 10 days ago, so I just hadn't heard from them very much. I was helping their attorney with some title research around our old tax collective records and stuff, they seem to have everything they need. Got a nice note back from the buyer saying, everything's looking good, thanks for checking in, we're on track.
Thank you.
And then I heard from your realtor today with essentially the same story, the buyer, I think, is going to come by in the next couple of weeks and just, just to spitball a concept, get some feedback from the staff about what he's thinking. But we, all signs are, we're on track for closing in September.
Nice.
Awesome.
No reason to think we aren't at this point, you know how these things can go, but we're getting pretty, pretty late in the, you know, we're in the seventh inning on this thing.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Be good. Roof floor property, Steve?
Roof floor property.
I'm sorry?
USA Springs.
The big one.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you with your mask on, Steve, my apologies.
I'm recommending we move to people's vast houses in the building.
Still didn't hear.
I, yeah. I'm sorry, Steve, that sounded like Charlie Brown's teacher.
I think that we need to, we need to move to people's vast and building, in the building again.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Yeah. Conservation Committee, ready?
Commission, yes, we are.
Commission, sorry. Please come up.
Can I read?
And...
You want to read?
Yeah, did everybody sign in?
Yes.
Yeah, just be sure that when you, when you speak, you just state your name and all that as well. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Sam DeMar, I'm Chair of the Conservation Commission.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, I don't know.
Dr. Steve is writing.
New to me.
Thank you, Cheryl.
My name is Susan Mooney, I'm Secretary of the Commission.
Cheryl Smith, a member of the Conservation Commission.
Welcome.
You see in front of you the active projects that we are working on at this point. The commission has voted to commit up to $300,000 for an easement on project 17-ACT number one, roughly 98, because I walked with the owner Saturday, we had the two octogenarians out there walking the property. Found out he was, we'd been told he was in his 70s, pretty active for his 70s, and I found out that he was, he was born 16 days after me. And we're looking, we're not sure just how much he's going to want to be able to put in the conservation easement, but we're ready to, you know, apply the $300,000 towards the whole property if, if we can. If it's something less than that, then we'll probably do something less than the $300,000.
And I apologize for the cutoff on the lower portion with the notes, but you can see where there's an equal in projects, so the first one where there's just an equal sign, you can't read anything, so basically... So basically, you're looking at A, B, C, D, and E for the letters there. And I can give you the other. What's cut off under ELT is, that should be S-E-L-T. And the, under which should be A-L-E, agricultural lands easement program. And then CF is what that other one should be. Sorry about that. Printer and computer non-conservation conversation.
So Cheryl, excuse me, I have a question then too. So project began, is that A? And project began, the next one, B?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Where there's an equal sign, that's
Oh, equal sign.
A, B, C, D, E.
So that first one, the project began in 2019, I mean, what, does that mean you started having conversations with the person then? Okay.
And we're still having conversations. He's, he's looking to see a fellow who's, well, we've seen a complete build-out plant, which would have no conservation easement on it at all. And it would require a loop road, one going in and then back out on, on the same road. But what, what we end up with, I'm not sure. We're working with Southeast Land Trust, and they're looking to see what might be funds available could go with our funds to give the owner what he's looking for, to recoup from what he bought the property for.
And typically, those, CELT looks to cobble together a number of different funding sources. So sometimes they, if it's something that has historic value, whatever, it might come out of some of the state, what's the fund I'm thinking of, and I can't think of the abbreviation for now. Historic properties, they've put together, anyway, we're all having
Brain cramp.
Sorry, I just, I literally got back from Maine at four o'clock and finished putting this together, so I apologize for that. And then they'll look at some of the USDA programs, usually with NRCS, whether it's agricultural lands or forest lands, something like that, they'll try and put funds together from a couple of different sources as well. Since there's pretty good fishing game with that particular project, there may be funds available through some of the wildlife resources to go along with what the Conservation Commission has, has looked at for that project.
Anybody have any questions on that particular project at this point? Okay, the next one would be P-20. It's, you know, like I say, about 28 acres in the, we've voted to commit up to $3,000 from the Conservation Fund for an appraisal. It'll be matched either by the landowner or some, some funds. Typically, they tell us the appraisals will run about $5,000. This is so that they can see what the value of the land is if it was a complete build-out versus, you know, whatever they can get, you know, for a conservation.
And that's, that's a first step on that one, because of the value of the property as being ranked as the absolute highest that you can get ranked for agricultural land in the state. And we have so little of that right now, so that if there's additional funds that, that Nottingham Conservation Fund can supply towards that project to help that project go to completion, we would probably look to give additional funds out of the Conservation Fund to that. I know that CELT is working with landowner, and CELT has been very, very successful in matching farmers who are looking for land, particularly young farmers trying to get into farming because land is so inaccessible. CELT has been very, very successful at matching farmers to conservation land. So that's what they're hoping to do eventually with this piece of property.
So how does, so you have the property, CELT matches a farmer to them, and the farmer works that land?
The farmer would probably buy the piece of property.
Up would buy the property?
Right.
Okay.
And oftentimes, there's, if they don't have the exact amount of hand, because once it's in conservation, it's certainly less than what it would cost on an open market.
Right.
For conservation easement, because it can no longer be developed. And then CELT could potentially, and has in the past, worked with one of the, I think it was one of the Scruton Farms, it was one of the dairy and poultry farms that was up in Stratford, that they worked with and matched a very young farming couple with that piece of property.
Yep.
And there was also a payoff schedule for that.
Okay. So the, so the funds you're identifying here, $3,000, is really just for the
Currently, right now, it's just for 50% of the appraisal cost.
Yep.
We put in $3,000 just to make sure if it ran over, you know, 25, if the appraisal ran over $5,000, you know, and we only put in $2,500, we'd have to come back for
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the additional $100, $200 or whatever. And this is just up to $3,000, so.
So is that where it ends for you guys? Or pending the appraisal, does it become another investment from Nottingham?
Could be another investment, yes. Depending on what, what CELT finds, you know, that's available, and if they can find a match with a farmer that wants to go buy the property and, you know, whatever, matching funds and stuff like that, and so.
So depending on what they can find for, for grant programs or federal programs, or out of some of the state funds, et cetera, or wildlife
Yep.
Funds.
Yep.
They may not need additional. They might be able to go ahead and have that project fully funded. If they do need additional funds, they may come back to Nottingham and say, can, you know, can you throw in another $20,000? Can you throw in another $40,000?
Yeah, yeah.
We just have no idea at this point, nor do they.
So I just, I haven't heard of this before, so I'm just interested in how it works. So if it was put into conservation, right, and then the couple, whatever, comes, and they're matched with the land, and they ultimately buy it or pay off over time or something like that, does it come out of conservation easement?
No.
No.
It stays in?
When it's in a conservation easement, it's in a conservation easement for perpetuity.
But they get to work it?
Correct.
There's only three, three entities that can take a conservation and do away with a conservation easement. The US government, state government, or the town government, if they need it for a, for a school or something like that.
Yeah.
It's the only way.
And with that, it's awful difficult to do even under any of those circumstances.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
But no, there's, there's lots of situations. I mean, it's no different than an active farm right now that decides to put their property into a conservation easement. There are hundreds of farms around the state that are in, have conservation easements on their property and are actively farmed and logged.
I didn't realize you could do that, because essentially, isn't it a commercial entity?
No.
A farm is not
So, St. Mulligan Forest
Yeah.
Has a lot of operation on it, and it's in a conservation easement.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
So, matter of fact, that's beneficial, because if, if you had forested lands that were never again harvested,
Yeah.
It doesn't keep it as a productive forest, it basically becomes overgrown,
Yeah, yeah.
Non-productive. It also provides an income to people that own the piece of property. And in all honesty, some people probably wouldn't ever put their land in conservation if they couldn't continue to get some kind of benefit from the land. So conservation easements actually encourage continued working on land.
Okay.
It's also a benefit to the town, because if they're going to timber harvest, you get timber harvest tax to the town, et cetera, so. And having a working farm potentially in Nottingham would be a real benefit.
And you can do operations like maple sugaring too, so that's, you know, like the Compties are doing on their property, which is under easement. Okay, any questions on, what questions on P-20? P-19, I've forgotten what P-19 is.
That was the one that was handed over to Bear Paw, with the new executive director said, oh, I'll look into that. But we haven't had any follow-up.
Oh, okay.
So.
Yeah, we don't, we just don't really know much about that property, because Bear Paw said that they would do all the contracting and et cetera, so we're not quite sure where that is, because we haven't gotten any feedback yet from Bear Paw on that one, so.
I know, I know Bear Paw right now has got a number of projects under their belt, and they're keeping hard, you know, they're actually looking for, to hire another person to, to help with some of those projects.
Is there a process you guys do to look at which land you want to purchase? Or is it, like, this 90 acres?
No, it's, it's more
Just because it's available, or is there like, okay, this is gonna be, it becomes a main focus for us because there's a river that runs through it, which is part of, you know, a nice thing? Or if, you know, it's next to some other person's conservation land that they have, or, you know, that's, could be budding up to make that trailway thing for the animals, you know? You know, it, that's where I'm saying, you know, is this 90 acres that we're talking about? You know, I mean, again, I'm just asking in general. Is there a reason why we look at that and
It could, it is a possible connection between some larger conservation areas.
Yep.
It doesn't, it doesn't, but any right at the present time, but it is a possibility of one of our routes for, like, the Ford General's Greenway, which we proposed and the town accepted a number of years ago. Like, as for, so that the larger animals can, you know, maneuver across the landscape without running into houses.
So it's, John, it's that, it's that connectivity, and it may just be a small corridor to provide the connectivity between open parcels or larger parcels of land, even if one of those parcels perhaps currently isn't under an easement, but maybe is being looked at, or the folks have approached, or might be considering an easement. And then you also touched on, on the fact that, you know, the rivers, we're thinking about water quality, et cetera, and then also if there happens to be an aquifer within the bounds of that, to protect drinking water sources.
I get more of a question, just like, you know, how do we, how do you decide? Is there, you know, what if there was three of these properties out there, but you can only buy one? What do you do? How do you make that decision of which one you buy?
We've been approached by people who wanted a conservation easement on their property, but it had no real conservation value because it was landlocked.
So it's important that these properties be tied to a road in order for public access?
Yes, or tied to another piece that's already been conserved. So it makes this a smaller block that much larger for habitat, water protection.
And in some cases, it could be something that, that is landlocked, maybe it, but, you know, there's, there's an aquifer underneath it, so perhaps that's a good reason to try and put that piece under conservation. But most of the conservation easements do allow, or a lot of the federal ones, require public access to them. So, and that's something that we also look at when we look at properties, is try and make sure that the residents of Nottingham can still have access to those properties. Now, if it's an active logging operation, like at certain points in time, forensics may sort of post areas of that, say that it's actively being logged right now with the logging operation, and not safe, you know, for foot travel, et cetera, within, which is certainly understandable, but protecting the public.
What about
And a farmer might do the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I was gonna ask, is in the case of the farm.
Right, and that, that often happens, I mean, like, on a lot of the farms that you go to around the state, if they're actively farming a crop, you can't turn around and decide that you're gonna ride your horse through the middle of their cornfield. You know, they do, they do have that right to protect their active crops. But tons of the farm also have hiking trails and footpaths that go through, particularly in the winter time, a lot of the things, things like that to go through the properties.
What was the balance in 2019?
It was, it was like, I just looked at that, Chris, you might be able to better answer, it was like 356?
Okay, I thought it was higher than that.
And I
We just, we just looked at the end of
I thought it was 4 something right now.
Yes, 4 and, 425-ish right now.
But I couldn't find that email, so.
Okay.
But this is what I knew was actually cert, the last certified amount, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes. The high, the 380 something?
Yeah, 386.
386.
386 is, was the, un-audited, but very likely accurate December 2020 number.
Right.
Okay.
And now we're at 422 or something.
Okay.
And I think the past Lux tax, things that we just did, was like adding like 100, another 115,000, which is probably already added to that number to get to the 400.
Yep.
But I think by the end of the year, if you don't spend anything, you'll be at a half a million dollars roughly.
Which if, if P-20 comes, comes through and requires additional funds, then I anticipate that that, that would probably be, I mean, we have no idea how much that would be, but it is a very valuable piece of farm land.
The 28 acres?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
I don't think there's, there's 28 acres in the total property, but maybe 2/3 of it is forested. Actually about, oh, 1/3 of it in field.
But that would likely be 2023 probably, right?
Well, they're hoping
They're hoping 2022, or the, or the end of this year. It's probably unlikely that it would go by the end of this year, but they're certainly hoping to do that in 2022. Which is, which is what I have as an estimated.
Oh, I was, I was just assuming that is the, the commitment for the money for the, for the appraisal.
No, that's project, looking at project.
Oh, sorry, okay.
And when we first started discussing this with CELT and with the owners, on, it was estimated it could be $150,000 to $200,000 from the Conservation Fund. And that would be matching with other grants available for that.
For 20?
Yeah, for 20.
How does that work, that, that that's 28 acres versus 90 for $300,000?
Because it's prime ag soils, best you can find in the state.
Okay.
And we have less than 1% in Nottingham.
Prime what kind of soil?
Agricultural. Agricultural soils.
Farming.
That's the soil you can have for farming.
I figured that out right now, but, so they're still gonna farm that land though, right? Or we just
It's, it's being used as a hayfield at this, most of it is a hayfield at this point, a small garden, but the current owners had the vision of farming that whole field at one point, and life got in the way.
As it does.
It does. So basically, it's a mechanism for encouraging, you know, working farms.
Yeah.
Yeah, and luckily, the current owner has not let that, I mean, a lot of times with that number of years, woodland, put an approach on it, but they have kept that open as a, as a hayfield. Like I said, there's such a shortage of farmable land.
We're currently not working on 16 and 18, they're just something that we, that we looked at a while back, and it may pop up again, they may pop up again, but I'm the others, the others are taking priority at this point.
Well, the one was withdrawn because of circumstances with the owner's health and, and needing to move and
Oh, okay.
Go very quickly.
Oh, yeah, I know, I remember that one.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now that you mention that.
They were really trying to, to work with us on it, but then person's health got in the way and retired for very quick immediate sale of the property. No conservation easement, so.
No, it's, like, that, most of that is farmland on that particular property, and it's
Yeah, it's pasture, it's, it's good for pasture, but not the best in terms of agricultural row crop or, or that type of production, so. Whereas the other one is any type of farming that you want to do on it would be suitable.
Any other questions? Or any questions? That's essentially what we're working on at this point. As people, people will approach us, you know, to see what, if they could put something in a conservation. We don't, we haven't gone out and actually targeted a particular property. We've got some, Ford General Greenways are just a, a vision, you know, of something, you know, maybe north and south and east and west, connecting up with Bear Paw on the west. west and, and connecting maybe with something over in Lee on the east. North, you know, there's some Selton property up, on the north end of town and some Selton property on the south end of town.
So, help me understand this a little bit. How much do you need right now to, to, you know, particularly these two, that looks like 303,000, am I understanding that correctly?
That's, that's what's committed by, by vote, up, up to that amount.
So that's coming out of your 425 that's in the account right now?
Correct.
And you're, you're projecting, what, a half a million by the end of the year? Give or take?
With the Lux taxes we just went and you added it to that 386 number, it comes to basically almost 500 grand.
That's a lot of money. And how, what, what's left on the Mulligan bond, whatever?
Uh, 300 to 400, somewhere in that, somewhere in 300 range, I think.
What are the chances, I mean, you guys have been doing this long enough, because I've been around long enough, I've seen you guys for, you know, many years and doing this. What are your chances of closing the 90K property? In your honor, just in your opinion to us right now, do you think, you think there's a 75% chance that this is going to happen? Or is this still something that's going to be less than 50? Because you just don't know?
But what we don't know is just how much of it, you know, will we put into a conservation easement? There's a possi, you know, but this is, this is a, a non-resident landowner. Bought this land on speculation, I guess.
Yeah, I know.
And he, he wants to get maximum return on it.
Sure.
And if he can do it with putting a conservation easement, you know, money, you know, money from a conservation, on a conservation easement to help match up, to get what he wants and still maybe develop part of it, so. But I don't, I don't see that the whole thing is going to go into a conservation easement at this point.
Because he's probably not going to get enough money from a conservation.
I don't know who this guy is, but I have a fair understanding of who he is.
I was just trying to figure that out. How does he, how does he figure he's going to get his return on his speculative investment if he's putting it into?
He's got a buildout of like 33 lots on that property.
It was in front of the planning board, I think, a couple of years ago.
So he's.
Okay, so again, I.
As far as I know, he has not presented anything to anybody at town in terms.
And we don't have an appraisal yet either.
Right.
Okay, so I, but I don't.
There has not been any formal presentation for any kind of development on this piece of property.
There might be a different property that I'm looking at. There's not too many 90 pro, 80 properties in town, but.
It's possible that this is going to be some sort of a combination of a small housing development, maybe with an open space feature to it.
Yep.
So there is conservation land that extends to the housing development and then maybe 50% can be put into a conservation easement that might be desirable for, for Nubata to buy.
Okay.
That money for the, for the protected land under a conservation easement would be coming, would be coming from the Conservation Fund.
Hopefully with, you know, matching funds from some government grant.
Still in process, discussions and.
So Ben, where were you headed? Were you headed down the line of if, at the end of the year, we're looking at half a million?
Well, I'd like to see, you know, if the numbers can fit. I mean, I, I think we can retire the Mulligan Forest deal if that was, if there's not money to put in there. But if, if, if this 90 acre parcel 17 doesn't go through, I mean, you know, I mean, that's an awful lot of money just to be sitting there.
Right. But let's not, all I'd ask you is not to jump before we know what's happening with the 28.
Well, that's why I was saying at the end of, you know, Donna had mentioned the end of the year, you know, I, you know, we really should be looking at paying down some debt. And we do have one that's Mulligan Forest, you know, that has some left on it that if we have an opportunity to just take care of it, we should really be looking at doing that. I understand the importance of conservation and all that stuff, but we're not even sure whether this is a viable option, you know, the whole 90 acres and what have you, the whole 300 grand will, will.
Right, right.
So, you know.
And I mean, they, they could be looking at and say, okay, if you can give us 350, then we'll put the whole thing into, you know, so, so we voted up to 300, 300,000, but they might look for another 50K. And if that, if that's the case, we might be looking at doing something like that right now. That, that doesn't seem like that's going to happen. I mean, they're going to ask for more money on that, but it depends upon what happens and what they're trying to do with that piece of property and how much money they're looking for. But I certainly know that on the others, depending upon with the 28K, how much the appraisal comes through on that, what the owner is looking for, and then what Selton can look at. I mean, you've got four months left to the year. So within four months, we may or may not have any idea where Selton can find additional funds for that 28 acres. And if we turn around and say, we're going to spend everything out of the Conservation Fund, we have no, no match. We have no additional funds to give to that property. And in all likelihood, it could potentially get sold and developed and be lost as agricultural land.
So maybe it's not, maybe it's not entire, Ben, but maybe some amount can go towards paying down some of the debt, if not all of the debt.
I mean, are you, what are you looking at? Three or 400,000, is that what you said? That's what?
No, your question was the Mulligan thing. Yeah, I, I don't have it in front of me. I think it's in the 300, 400.
Yeah.
I think it's in the town report.
Oh, sure. I saw it in front of me, but.
And I, you know, I would agree with, I mean, personally, I agree with that. Conservation Commission would need to vote on it, then you'd need to have a public hearing on spending those funds. That can't be a decision just by.
No, I understand that.
Right.
Us nor by the select board. It's going to be a joint decision, remember, in a public hearing as to how that's done. And I, I think it would be viable if it turns out that neither of these projects can go forward. But again, I'd look at it and say, you know, if you're going to try and do that by the end of 2021, you're going to negate probably both of these projects going forward if you were to spend out the bulk of the funds in the Conservation Fund.
Going back to John's question, I mean, you're not entirely sure that 90 acres will happen, what about the 28?
The 28 will go into a conservation easement. The owners are adamant that's what they want done with it. They contacted Selton about putting it into a conservation easement and Selton came to us and just asked for the appraisal stuff while they're working on putting the rest of the project together.
Okay.
So that project, I have no doubt will go through. It may actually go through quicker than the other one.
Okay.
Do they have a rough idea what the value would be?
Okay.
I don't. I mean, what is 28 acres with road frontage go for per acre? Not cheap right now.
No, it's not. You're right.
So.
Five years ago, maybe it was cheap, but it's not cheap now.
Yeah, we get about 318.
Essentially, it's, it's not like the, the $500 I paid for my two acres back in 1965.
Donna, what did you say?
318.
318.
Yeah.
And do you know how much is paid down every year?
Uh, it looks like it, it's like 42.5, right?
Right, so we'll pay down another 42 this year and bring it to 270 or whatever that is, 280.
Yep.
About 42 a year.
Yeah, 42, 42.5. So, I mean, one thing we could do, Ben, maybe is, like, let's revisit this again, say December.
Yeah, I think that'd be worth doing, yeah.
Because I, I mean, maybe it's 318, maybe we don't want to take 103, you know, 100,000, but maybe we take 100 or 150 devoted towards it, right? So it at least pays down some of it a little bit faster. Maybe some number in there.
Don't get me wrong, I understand the importance of what you're doing. So please, don't, don't take away from that. I understand what you're, what you're doing and I, I believe in it. But there's no guarantees on any of these. And meanwhile, we've got a debt over here that's just still there. And we have money that's sitting in, in, in an account. Again, I, I totally understand the importance of your, your work and I support it whole heartedly, but, you know, there's other things we have to take.
And I understand that totally. You know, I'm just, I'm just saying that within four months, you know, hopefully we'll have a lot more information.
Okay.
On the 28 acre piece, Project 20.
Yeah. So when we revisit it in December, maybe we could have another meeting and you can say, where are we at with this? And then we can maybe move forward. Is that so? All right.
Yeah, reasonable, yeah.
And I, and I, you know, again, I just caution in terms of the, the amount, there is only so much developable land in the town. And yes, we do have development going on because the price of land is really high right now. But if the market goes down like it did, then, I mean, for several years, the amount of lumps that was coming in was 13 to 26,000 dollars a year for several years coming into the Conservation Fund. So right now, you look because of the price of land, because of what land is selling for, you're getting land use change tax that's coming in at a higher value. So that really varies and jumps around. And nobody says that this market's going to continue like this for a period of time.
And eventually, we're going to run out of land that's under current use.
Hey, Lorraine, can you make sure that's captured as an action item to schedule?
In December?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, because the luck only comes from land that's coming out of current use.
Okay.
So if the land's not in current use and it gets sold, then there's none of that that comes into it.
Do you have a track number of acres in current use?
Um, we don't. Well, that's, that's not our purview anyway.
No, but it's your future source of funds, so I didn't know if it was something you were, you were monitoring. We could put it together, I just didn't know if you had actively done that. My sense of it is that that number has been really quite stable.
That would be useful information.
Well, I know the piece of property next to me was on the current use and it's got four houses on it now.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure with some of these others.
Now, we'll see if we can, we'll see if we can give you a snapshot of it.
I suspect Maple Ridge was probably on the current, current use when that property went in.
What was?
Maple Ridge.
The Maple Ridge.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we'll see if we can put it together.
And you should also double, because just because it listed under current use, also find out whether or not it's also got a current easement on it.
We don't, we don't have the data on that.
If it's a current use property and it's under a current easement.
For tax purposes, it's, it's the same. So when you look at the tax records, you can't tell whether it's under current use or got an easement on it.
And we don't, on the tax side, we don't know where, everything that's got a conservation easement on it is. There are conservations we're not aware of.
But you're still getting the same taxes regardless whether or not there's a conservation easement on it or not.
If it's in current.
It's coming in under current use regardless whether it's a current easement or not. So current use tax remains the same, whether or not, that's a misconception a lot of folks have, is that once a thing goes into a conservation easement, the town no longer pays taxes on the property. And that is totally incorrect.
But current use taxes are very low.
It's a lot of, it's a lot less.
But it stays as, as the town still maintains that current use tax rate regardless of whether or not there's an easement on the property or not. If it went into housing development, you'd get more for taxes on it, but you would also pay a heck of a lot more, at least double if not more in terms of the services that are required for developed property versus non-developed property.
So you're, you're looking to the authorization with 3,000? Is that what you're looking for?
We can't do that tonight without a public hearing.
Gotcha. Okay.
But the fact that we voted at a Conservation Commission to dedicate 3,000 dollars to this appraisal was enough to let Selton know that they could go ahead and do the appraisal.
Okay.
So maybe in a month or so, we can have a public hearing for that.
All right. Do you have anything else?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just waiting for you to ask.
I do. Recently, there's been discussion about aquifers in town and the fact that we don't have any protection for them as far as reduced salt use areas. And that might be something for you folks to think about because two of our large aquifers are on state roads, 156 and 152. The third is on Kelsey. Maybe it would be wise or give some thought to asking DOT if they would mark a certain area within or, or at the limits of these aquifers so that we won't get so much road salt put down and disposed for them.
How receptive has the state been with that?
Not something I'm, I've tried, I don't know.
Okay. I don't think I've ever seen them in, in New Hampshire anywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Reduce salt area sign on the, it's a trigger for the.
I know what they're used for. I see it in Massachusetts all the time, but I don't think I've ever seen any in New Hampshire.
Yeah, yeah. I've seen it on the state highway.
Okay.
I've seen it on a back road in Nashua, oh, actually Marimack. Manchester Street, well, Manchester Street coming out of Nashua going into Marimack is, they have a reservoir there and they, you know, reduce salt, so.
Okay, yeah.
I think there's one up by the reservoir that serves Durham too, right? Isn't there? One by the reservoir that serves Durham, isn't there reduced?
I haven't been there lately, but it could be.
It could be the Bellamy.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I don't, you have anything?
Any questions from the board?
I'm good.
Nope, thanks for coming.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
See you in December.
See you in December.
Thank you for.
God, it'll be winter then, I'm not ready for that.
And then you can wish me happy birthday.
Again?
Hey, I'm holding a head.
Any other business? No?
Did you want to go to non-public?
Do we have anything for non-public?
Uh, the only, we got late, a late communication from your attorney about one of the cases that's still open.
Okay.
It was late enough that if you didn't get a chance to review that, think about it, that's understandable.
I just.
I, I read it quick, I didn't go into detail.
So it's entirely up to you, I will.
You want to wait for another meeting?
Sure, we, we can wait.
All right.
Yeah.
You look at the court dates in there, I, I don't think it kills us to, to wait two weeks, but your, your next meeting's going to be long, just so you know, but that's okay. We just got it at 4 o'clock today, so.
Yeah, let's wait.
All right.
Yep.
So that was the only thing for non-public?
That was the only thing I had for.
Okay. All right, nobody else had anything?
I didn't.
Review action items for next meeting? Well, I think we.
Can I read them?
Yeah.
I have the next thing, Old Town Hall, Road Standard, policy, practice, at some point, the 300 celebration, and then the NCC in December.
Is there a specific focus around the topic around the Old Town Hall?
No, just, you need to, you need to, we need to come to you, I think, with a proposal of how we're going to manage the facility.
Okay.
You need to get your head around what, you know, what its condition and use is right now.
Got it.
I think what I'm going to come back to you with and say is we need to make it usable and shut it down in the winter. But I'm not 100% sold myself on that, but I think that's where I'm suggesting that you go, given the cost and the use pattern and.
So it's not getting enough use?
It's not getting any right now because we have it shut down, but even when it wasn't shut down, it wasn't getting a lot of use. So.
These are some of the hard decisions you're going to have to make with some of these buildings in town, yeah.
Yeah. This one rises to your level, so.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All right. Then, so be it.
We do, we got one says a new way to till the end of the meeting and oftentimes that's a. Do you have anything, any business you'd like to bring?
I'm quite hard hearing and I've been missing so much of what you said and I apologize, what are you asking?
Just asking if you had something you'd like to bring forward to us.
I did, I had, I had a question.
Yeah, come on up. Just be sure to state your name for the record, please.
I'm sorry.
State your name for the record, address.
Right here.
Yep, yep.
Excuse me, this.
Yeah, she'll hear you.
Okay, good.
I'm Susan Diamond Johnston and I live on Moore's Road and I wanted to just have some clarification. I've asked quite a few people and I'm not able to really get a direct answer of the issue and I understand the town needs to have certain standards, I realize that. John Fernal did really an excellent job when he was there and I know his last year, he tried to do his very best to get the road up to what at that time, my understanding was the standard. But now, and yes, we weren't on the ballot, and I just need to have this clarified by you all that when Jim Rossborough separated off his land and road from his home, it was my understanding that that was something that you all were willing to do, but he had to, within a certain period of time, bring the road up to standard since he owned the road? Am I correct about this?
There was an amendment put to the Warren article that the road had to meet a certain standard set by the Board of Selectmen, yes.
And was there a certain timeframe work that's supposed to be done?
I don't believe that there was a timeframe involved.
No time?
No.
So the town is willing to just go along with it or not?
What do you mean?
I'm concerned that if it's not being taken care of, that we will lose our police, ambulance and mail because if you, if the town is not happy with the road, they're not gonna be coming in, am I correct?
Well, it still gets plowed in the winter, is that correct? Yeah, so you're not losing any services, I mean, police and fire can still get down there, so you're not losing any of that. So I'm a little confused where your questioning is.
So we're not gonna be losing any services at this point?
No. No.
Because from what I understood, the town was not going to take over the maintenance of the road unless the owner brought it up to standard.
Yeah, that's, that's a little.
A little.
Misinformed, yes.
All right.
So the language of the Warren article approved acceptance of the road as a town road on the condition that it was brought up to the standard specified by the town.
Okay.
And that still stands, at any time, the road owner, I forget, you said his name, but at any time, the road owner can do the, you know, the necessary improvements to the road, you know, as per, you know, he's gotta work it out with the public work supervisor, but that's on him to engage in that process.
All right.
They've just done that.
Gotten in touch with Sean?
May, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Couple days ago.
Okay. But yeah, the town doesn't refuse to, you know, we don't refuse to send police and fire down a road because it's not a town road or that it's not, you know, set some certain way, that's.
Well, I appreciate having some clarification, honestly, I've heard more stories.
You're in a, legally in a very strange place compared to most of the roads in town. You are, your road is different than most of those around you.
Right.
So the bottom line for you is unless the board tells us to do anything differently, you shouldn't perceive any changes in anything.
All right.
Certainly for this winter, we, you know, you're gonna get plowed and you're gonna.
Good, well, that's great.
I can't speak for the mail, but nothing, you shouldn't perceive any changes in service levels.
All right, well, I was.
There's a whole lot of legal things that we can't really answer all in one shot, but.
Right, of course, I understand.
It should be easy that day to day, your life really shouldn't change.
Good, okay, well, thank you and I'm sorry to take the time.
No, you're fine, that's why we're here.
You know, I just.
Try to stop the fire department, say, if you're calling, they're gonna go there.
I just wanna be sure I'm on the right page, you know, so, thank you all very much for your time and really appreciate all that you do for the community. It's, I've been here a long time and I've seen some wonderful changes here and it's just, just great. I'm so proud to be part of Nottingham, although I haven't been very active, you know, I've been working a great deal, but now I'm retired. I hope that I can give a little voluntary time to help in an area that's needed, so, thank you both, thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming and asking instead of just listening to all of the noise.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so I wrote to you about that road request. And you're not gonna have, I mean, you have a policy answer in place, but that is the policy that you are in the middle of discussing, so.
Correct.
My answer was, I will let you know that that request has come in and that you're right in the thick of it, so you've now been faced with that question that you've been waiting for.
Right.
For that particular road and.
Until it gets accepted or, you know.
Well, it is accepted, conditional.
Well, fair.
I wouldn't phrase it that way, you have an accepted, it's not accepted. It hasn't met.
Pending meeting, yeah, yeah.
It still retains its status as an emergency lane.
Yes, until you.
So it won't lose anything.
Until you say otherwise, everything that used to be an emergency lane is still an emergency lane, so.
Yeah.
In terms of what people are going to experience on the ground.
Exactly.
There's going to be new areas that are maintained by the town, people are going to see town trucks in places that they haven't seen them before.
Correct.
There are not situations where there used to be town trucks that are going to disappear.
Correct, yeah.
That's not gonna happen anywhere. Until you tell us to do something differently, that's all.
All right, so if there's no other.
Motion to adjourn.
Again.
That was fast.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.